Tony, you almost job getting this all done, huh? Oh my gosh. All right, everybody. John's ready, we'll get started. Good evening, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our last zoning meeting of the year. All right, good deal. All right, we're going to quickly go through some decisions. So what I'm going to do here is I'm just going to read them quick and just ask that we approve the variances as written as I go through these. And to save time, the first one is Scott Etchell on 161 Dune Road. And we have a decision to, written decision to approve that variance. I'm going to make a motion, we accept that as written. Second by Jimmy, we all in favor? Okay. Next one is Joy Hepburn. She's even here for these, I'll just go through them. Joy Hepburn, 339 Mill Road. Again, we have a written decision to approve that. So I'll make a motion and we accept that as written. I have a second.
Second.
Second by John, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We good with that? Good. Thomas in Faith Tilson, 218 Dune Road. We have the decision on that one is to approve the variance, so I'll make a motion, we accept that as written. Second.
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Lawrence and Donna Francis, 77 Library.
Yep.
Yeah. Once again, we have a decision to approve that, so I'll make a motion, we accept that decision as written. Second by Dan, all in favor? All right.
Thank you.
West Hampton Property Management LLC, 141 Montauk Highway. We have a written decision to approve that variance also, so I'll make a motion, we accept that decision as written. Second by...
Second.
By Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Kathryn Hayes, 69 Beach Road. Decision to accept that variance, so I'll make a motion to accept it as written. Second by John, all in favor? John Riegler, 71 Lyle Lock. We have a written decision to approve that variance, so I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept that as written. Second. Second by Joe, all in favor?
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Pine West LLC, 41 Dune Road. Yep. We also have a decision to approve, variance, approving that variance, so I'll make a motion, we accept that as written. Second by...
Second.
Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, he has some good presentations. Craig and Jacqueline Mishner, 108 Seafill Lane. Again, another one that we have decision to approve that variance, I'll make a motion that we accept that variance as written. Second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome to... Wow.
Nine for nine.
Nine for nine, wow. That's a record. Well, well put. All right, our holdover is number 10, Jim Badgic, 27 Sedgwick Lane. We have a request again to hold that over for all purposes, I'd like to make a motion to do so. You have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor? All right, Jimmy, of course abstains. The next one, 16 Fanning Holding, we had already decided to hold that one over until January. Right? So that's just, so a holdover. All right. Back to number 12. All right. Michael Jesselson, 49 Bayfield Lane. Request variances from 197682 for proposed habitable space in detached building, which is doing, be not normal and accessory to principal, single-family dwelling use from 19735A for proposed studio building, which is located partially in front yard where prohibited, and also from 19735A for proposed pool and pavanna, which is located in the front yard where prohibited. And lastly, 19735A for existing tennis court, proposed to maintain in the front yard where prohibited.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of the applicant, here with me again, this is Newwinds Hisa Matsonaga from RUR Architects. Last month when we were here, the board had some questions regarding the proposed studio, proposed with plumbing, and the detached garage that is still standing at the property. So I wanted to provide a little bit of a history of the pre-existing habitable space in the garage, to support the fact that the owner never intended to abandon that use. So by way of background, there was a CO in 2007, which is submitted as part of your package, which notes the detached one-car garage with finished room, with bathroom at grade level and bedroom, a living room and bath and second-story space for owner-occupied accessory use. There are also COs issued in 1985, 1990, and 1996, habitable space in the garage including plumbing. The habitable use to bedrooms, the bathrooms, and the garage go as far back as 1973, when a permit was issued by the village for the garage and servants quarters, and the CO was noted for sleeping. We last spoke about the square footage of what was existing in the garage and what is being proposed. I dug through a lot of our records and found that in 2018, the owner had Oak Gentry of Gentry Construction take measurements of the garage cottage structure, and we asked RUR Architecture to prepare an analysis, which they will speak to. The existing footprint of the garage structure is 720 square feet with total habitable space of 823.56 square feet. And again, the architect will speak to the calculations. The habitable space proposed in the studio is less than that, and is being proposed at 679 square feet. Reconstructing the garage cottage in its current location, having the same square footage and internal features reoriented would require an area variance, because the garage that's existing is less than four feet from the property. In addition to the variance noted in the denial letter, we are seeking a special permit from the zoning board under 19729C for the proposed studio with plumbing as a grandfather use. And we think that the facts at hand support that for the following reasons. The proposed studio does not in large extent or expand the non-conforming use, as the footprint height of the proposed studio decreases from what previously existed, the setbacks are being increased to a conforming location. The proposed studio is less than height, non-conformity and floor area satisfying the criteria under 19729C2. Existing is 823 square feet and proposed is 679 square feet. Reconstruction is located on the same part of the lot and meets the dimensional setbacks. The proposed studio does not change the character of the non-conforming use that previously existed, and does not impact the neighborhood, and will not result in any increase in the intensity of the non-conforming use. And based upon the specific facts, we believe that the special permit should be granted. And I think it's helpful for the board to kind of just understand a timeline of where we started back in 2015, from the purchase to where we are today, because I know that there has been a lot of time in between, so I thought it would help to have some context. So Mr. Jesselson purchased the property in February of 2015. In September of 2016, he engaged KPC Planning Services to prepare a zoning analysis to assist him with the redevelopment of the property. In 2017, the owner hired an architect by the name of Paul Wanzenberg, who was hired, who's actually the third architect on the project. In 2018, in June 21st, 2018, Oak Gentry of Gentry Construction prepared the square footage of the existing carriage house for then-architect Paul Wanzenberg for use as part of the redesign and redevelopment. And I have a copy of the plans, and I believe they're actually part of the village files, because in 2018, we filed for a denial letter based upon those plans. And on June 22nd, 2018, the applicant received a denial letter from Paul Houlihan for proposed new dwelling, swimming pool, tennis court, patio, detached garage with accessory use apartment and decks. The denial letter specifically noted that a special permit for reconstruction of the accessory apartment was required, and he also commented that the plans in the village records noted that there was only one bedroom in that structure as opposed to two, which actually existed in the structure that is still standing. On June 26th, 2018, a building permit, P180098, was issued to demolish and remove the house, the patios, and the swimming pool. The detached garage and tennis court were left remaining and not part of the demolition permit. On July 19th, 2018, our office filed a zoning board application based on the denial letter, which was later pulled in the end of July due to a comment and further design changes based upon some elevation questions and square footage issues that related to the tennis court that Mr. Houlihan had raised. And we had met with him at that time on July 20th, Oak Gentry and I, to discuss the setbacks and the sanitary location, the amount of fill that was going to be required. And in the fall of 2018, Architect Wanzenberg's firm was terminated from the project. The owners then had discussed the design plans with Debbie Reiser of RUR Architects. She was consulted for the project to come up with a design that kind of suited Mr. Jesselson's design criteria, if you will. And in September of 2019, RUR Architects prepared a preliminary plan, which was reviewed, I believe at a meeting with Oak Gentry, myself, and Brad, to just make sure that we were, since the design had changed and there was a new building inspector, that we were consistent in the variances that we believed that we were needed. And there were some tweaks to the original design that was previously presented in 2018. In 2020, the architects continued to work on the design plans with the homeowner, and the project was shelved for a period of time due to COVID. And in 2021, there were continued meetings between the architect and the homeowner and the consultants on the project, really to discuss some code interpretations, some design changes. We had received revised drawings at that time also from RUR Architects, which I have copies of, which I could submit to the board. And in 2022, there were still meetings between the architect and the owner in terms of coming to a design that they felt was pleasing to the owner and also kind of felt that it fit within the character of the community. Civil engineer, content engineering, was hired in 2022 to come up with a sanitary as well as a drainage design. In 2023, the civil engineer filed for the health department permits, and we applied for the denial letter, and here we are today, 2023. So while there is a period of time that has transpired from when this all started back in, I guess, 2018, we never, we, the homeowner, never intended to abandon any of the use. Studio that we're proposing, we're proposing it with a full bath. And one thing, I know that the homeowner couldn't be here today, but he did provide an affidavit, which I'd like to submit to the board. And if I could just read the relevant portions, several copies. It's an affidavit from Michael Jesselson, who states that he's been working on the redevelopment of his property consistently since purchasing it. From the outset, they have been preparing the land and looking for the right design professional to assist with the design that suited his family and the neighborhood. At the beginning, Oak Gentry of Gentry Construction was our man on the spot, and since we bought the property, we spent over $125,000 with this firm to make sure the property was being maintained and prepared for building. Built the pool and demolished the main house, which was destroyed by Superstorm Sandy. He has spent almost $1.5 million to date on four different architects. The first architect was not capable of doing the project, and the next two architects' work did not fit the neighborhood. The presence of fourth architect, which is RUR Architecture, has created a design that fits our family and the neighborhood, backed up by the neighbors' endorsements letters, which we submitted last time that we were here. We have maintained the tennis court throughout and kept an existing detached garage and two-bedroom building. We have responded timely and corrected any notices from the town or neighbors throughout if something wasn't right, and we have maintained the grounds with a local landscaper. The only reason I am building this house is because I have four children and 10 grandchildren, and I am hoping to spend more time with family throughout the years during this later stage of my life. I'm not looking to build something excessive, but it is important for us to have a bathroom for my grandchildren and family members in the proposed studio space. I can appreciate that while from the street the property may have looked abandoned, it has been just the opposite. I've spent a lot of time and money from the very beginning to build something that would enhance the property and the neighborhood and allow our family to spend more time together. And that was signed by Michael Jesselson, the property owner. So I guess I can turn it over now to the architect, if you could talk about the calculations.
One thing we got to talk about, Karen.
Sure.
You've raised 19729, and this was not advertised as an interpretation case or for any relief under, right? It wasn't advertised for 19729. So I think what we got to get to the bottom of is what Brad's interpretation was, and if you want to amend your application to challenge his interpretation and try to argue that, that you, I'm not saying you can't, but I think it has to be amended formally and renoticed that way. So maybe, can I ask Brad to explain what your interpretation was so that we can determine if they're challenging it?
Sure. So I don't specifically recall the meeting we had September 2019. I became the zoning officer here in April 2019, and I'm going to imagine that if people took a meeting with me to talk about an application that had been made within the year 2018, my, I'd probably said, I'll just do whatever the previous zoning officer, you know, I'm not going to try to pull the rug out of my butt. I think it's problematic, though, four years later, to consider this outbuilding, such as garage with habitable space, to be existing. It existed for a long time without a principal structure. It was not kept in repair. We had numerous violations about the site with complaints, and for their own testimony, we're talking about a building that was supposedly destroyed, Superstorm Sandy, which was 2012. So the principal use had been gone for over 10 years now at this point. I mean, I can't, I'm not interpreting that that's a, that is an existing use, existing accessory use without a principal use all these years later. So that's why there's no relief in here spelled out with my denial for a special permit to reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming cottage or second dwelling on a property, because there's no dwelling on the property. I can appreciate things happen, but you can't just file for a demo or file for a plan, and then that's held in perpetuity. I mean, there's, you know, things are good, permits are good for a year or six months if you don't put shovels in the ground. I mean, we had a demo with, that actually calls out to demolish that outbuilding. They didn't do it, it wasn't on the actual permit, so maybe that was something worked out the previous inspector, but it's hard to look at that file where it's specifically called out to be part of the demolition. And then five years goes by, and it's, now it's existing and able to be rebuilt under 19729. So that's why that's not in here. We're going to have a, I think it's on later, there's a, an application on tonight about reconstructing an existing cottage. Different relief is spelled out for that. So I think the applicant needs to make an interpretation to challenge my denial to include this feature, to rebuild this, to make the case to you all that it is existing, and they've made good faith efforts to maintain it, and therefore they're entitled to rebuild it under that section.
Yeah, I think that's probably, now you've heard what Brad's position is, if you want to go the route you're going in, I think we need an amended application that, you know, checks the interpretation box, and then this gets advertised that way. You know, whatever relief you want, if you want the interpretation plus a one, you know, relief under 19729, then check those boxes, so to speak, and make the argument, as Brad said, if you want to challenge his interpretation, you can make that argument that it's incorrect, and here's the facts to support it, or the case law or whatever, but jurisdiction, I just don't know, without having started off that way, we can't just...
Right.
On the spot, do an amendment and let you, do you know what I mean, Karen?
No, I know exactly what you mean. And at the last meeting, I asked if it was something where, you know, it would have to be noticed as such, because I know that in the 2018 denial letter, it was noticed, and I think that that's when Brad said that it's, you know, his position was that it's been standing there, and it's been such a long time. So, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with doing that and amending the application to incorporate that, and then having it re-noticed and moving forward in that direction. You know, I mean, I think it's just that, if this way, then it allows the board to kind of have a clear, concise, factual history of what's transpired. If that helps the board, then we can certainly do that.
Yeah. Suggesting, by the way, that you can't finish the...
Right.
The presentation on the variances that you have noticed. But I just wanted to make, because you, it seems like the focus now is on that issue in order to preserve the...
Structures now in a front yard, it's a corner lot. So based upon the shape of the lot and where the house is sited, the only thing that needs variance relief for front yards, for front yards are the, you know, the existing tennis court, the pool, the accessory pool house, as well as the proposed studio.
It's kind of a lot.
So, so the way that the interpretation was, because it is two side yards, the rear yard, you know, all these accessory structures, there was no place to put them in a rear yard in a conforming location.
So, you know, I, when I looked at this, and we talked a little bit about this last month, this is all, the whole layout of this property is all based on even this tennis court. Now, the tennis court is going to get, has variance to be in the front yard.
Right.
And the way the property is laid out, and I understand there's two front yards, because it's a corner lot, but it seems to me that the applicant has really been conveniently locating the proposed house, I think 30 some odd feet from the southern neighbor, because we can call that a rear yard. But looking at it, if we look at this without knowing the code for the two front yards, we would say that that, that's the rear yard, it should be 50 feet. And also, I mean, we look at this too, you know, the tennis court, I mean, I never thought the tennis court was in such great repair, personally looking at it, this week notwithstanding where it's a, you know, a water volleyball court, because it's totally submerged, because of wood. But this whole property could be rearranged if we get rid of the tennis court, or relocate the tennis court to the back.
I don't believe that there, that if you relocate the tennis court or shift the house, you're going to need variances also for variance setbacks. Because if you reposition this house and face it, let's say even from Bayfield, and the architect can talk to that, there's not sufficient room in the rear yard to place all these accessory structures, so you'd still need significant variances.
Still need variances, but basically, when you look at this, it looks like everything is in the front yard.
Of the accessory structures, right?
Yeah.
Because of the...
It's on the front yard, and...
Because of the interpretation.
We have the tennis court, you know, when tennis courts have come up before us, we don't like tennis courts in the front yard, but that has become a feature in this area. We understand that, and we just approved one this year.
Right.
Okay, so we're well aware of that, but the reality of it is, is that, you know, this is, all we have left is the tennis court. You know, the other, is it a garage? Call it a garage that has two bedrooms in it or whatever, that was all, I thought was going to be demolished, when we look at the demolition permit.
Yeah.
So we left that up.
On the demolition permit, I have the demolition permit here, it says demolish and remove house, patio, and swimming pool.
Okay. I saw something in the file about, about the application to...
Plan that goes along with that, it's not, this is restricted, but it also includes this outbuilding.
Okay. So, I, you know, I just want you, let you know, you know, when I think, I look at this, this could have been redesigned, and with all due respect, the idea of this applicant wanting to have it for his grandchildren, we, we got to look at the variance on the property, because we don't know this gentleman, and I believe he's totally sincere, but life could change, and next year, the property could be for sale.
Right.
So the idea that, you know, his grandchildren need bathrooms, really, we can't, we can't figure that out into our decision-making. I just hope you understand that.
No, I understand that. I think, I guess my, my question is, is if it was something where there was no plumbing in the studio space, is the, the other variance is still an issue then for the board?
Things in the front yard are, you know, something we have to consider on an individual basis. Is it an issue? I mean, is it an automatic yes or no? I can't say that right now.
Right.
No. But this is, this is a big project, and, you know, we all know the property and the area, and it'd be much better. I, we saw the landscape design, and, but we have to look at the village code for this, and we have to also keep in mind that we'll be setting precedence with this. In the past with the tennis courts, when they've come up before us, the house is already there, and they want to put the tennis court.
Right.
So now that the tennis court's there, so we want to build around it. If I, am I making myself clear on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we all want to see the property improved.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Right.
That's not the issue.
Right. Would you like me to have the architect speak to, you know, the layout of the property and how that was designed, or, you know, is it something, it sounds like, I mean, I'm going to have to table this anyway if we're going to speak a different, an amended application?
Yeah, I leave that up to you, but he's here tonight, maybe... If he's here tonight, why don't we just go ahead and do that while he's here? I think that could be part of the record.
Before you go, elaborate more on the studio.
Sure. So what's being proposed is a bathroom, and it's adjacent to the pool house, which obviously is 200 square feet, which is not, there's no connection from the pool house to what's proposed in the studio. They were hoping to use it kind of as a rec room. The pool house will get shut down and winterized, you know, off-season, and only be used probably three months of the year. So this other structure was to allow them to have the space to use, well, year-round.
Right, the studio portion you're talking about.
Yes. Yes.
I mean, that might, that might change things without the plumbing.
Right.
More of an accessory, accessory structure.
If the plumbing was removed.
Right, just in there.
Right. Yes.
Wait, we'll have, it's a Sunday tournament. Yeah.
Good evening.
I'm Hisa Matsonaga from RUR Architecture. Last time we were here, you, we were asked to calculate the existing inhabitable space as I briefly mentioned. Based on the pla, plan made by the previous architect, according to our calculation of that drawing, they have footprint of, it has a footprint of 720 square feet over two floors. First floor has, plus the attic. And the total inhabitable area comes to 823... twenty-three point five six square feet. And this compared to our proposal, our studio space is currently at six hundred ninety-seven, seventy-nine square feet. The other difference is that, um, in the existing garage, they have two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and while we have one full bathroom. Also, the, Karen also mentioned this, but, um, the setbacks is retained, um, on the west property line, while the existing garage does not take into account any, any setback.
Pretty much as a property.
Yes.
I don't have anything else, thank you for those calculations. Any other questions for the architect? No?
No.
Anything else you want to add tonight? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we'll leave on this call on a swift reminder. The question is that, it seemed really
We can certainly do that, you want to, because you're going to just have to update it, uh, re-advertising, you want to go with that next month?
Sure.
And you'll just have to, whatever the deadline is, like at, what's the deadline for next month?
May have passed.
Yesterday?
Yesterday.
You could just hold this one over.
Yeah.
Um, and then, once it gets re-advertised, they effectively join together. I mean, it'll, the, the second one essentially takes over, but you can take the record from this one and put it into that, so that you're not starting completely from scratch.
Great, okay, yes, thank you, happy holidays.
You also.
Happy holidays.
All right, so I'll make the motion, we go ahead and we're just going to hold over the record for this hearing, and then we'll edit to the end. Second, Jim, all in favor? Right, I want to Mr. You. Hunter Milligan, Millington, twenty-seven Howell Lane, applicant requests permit from the ZBA under 197-29C1 to reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming second dwelling use cottage on a single-family residential property.
Good evenings to the applicant, James N. Hume, three-two-three Mill Road, West Hampton Beach. Um, also present tonight are the Millingtons, the owners of the property. Interested in hearing the deliberations tonight. Um, as indicated, uh, we're looking to reconstruct a, um, an existing accessory cottage that's on the subject premises. If you go there, you'll find a two-story, single-family house, a one-story detached cottage, a garage with a shed and a pool, um, and I believe all of that is covered by certificates of occupancy. Um, this property was the subject of a two thousand and five zoning board, um, appeal relative to the addition of a screen porch to the main house, and as part of that process, what had been a fully, uh, separate residence, this cottage, uh, was converted, uh, by the filing of a covenant, uh, to, uh, an accessory use, the use of which is limited, uh, to family guests and, uh, uh, non-rent paying individuals, uh, so that's what
Going to stay the same, Jim?
Pardon me?
It's going to stay the same, right?
Yes, yes. Uh, so it, it, and at the time, it consisted of a, and today consists of a bedroom, a bathroom, and a, um, a larger room, well, it's hard to describe it as a larger room, based on the size of the cottage, but, uh, a third room that has a kitchen area and a, and a sitting area, basically. Uh, so the, um, applicants are seeking to, um, reconstruct the use, and so, um, as indicated in the denial letter from Brad, that implicates, uh, 197-29C, which, um, uh, allows for the, um, reconstruction of, um, a pre-existing non-conforming use such as this, but without the ability to enlarge, extend or expand. And so if you look further in the section C of that code section, you see some of the standards that, um, will apply, and I'll discuss those for a few minutes, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Number one, the reconstructed cottage will be in the exact same location with the exact same, uh, footprint, uh, the exact same height, although the roof line itself is changing a little bit, the, the overall height of the, uh, structure remains the same. Uh, it will still consist of a, a bedroom, a bathroom, and this kitchen living area, although slightly reoriented, I, I think the bathroom is moving to the other side of the bedroom, but still all comparably, uh, uh, comparably si, uh, sized within the existing, within the building that will have the same footprint, and also, as I indicated, the roof line is changing a little bit to provide for a slight bit of storage space above, uh, but not anything that could ever possibly be used in any way as, uh, as habitable space. Uh, so if you go through the, uh, just the general terms, the standards that are laid out in, um, 29C, um, it prohibits, uh, basically prohibits the increase of the degree of non-conformity, which I think that this building meets that requirement. It can be used to no greater extent than, uh, the building that exists now, uh, after it's been reconstructed. Uh, it's not being enlarged, extended or expanded, um, uh, on the same location on the property, uh, there's, this is the only non-conforming use on the property, so we don't want to follow the, the limit of more than one. Um, so if you go through the whole checklist there, I think this, um, this proposal meets those requirements. So, basically, the code requires a special permit from you in order for us to, not a variance, but a special permit from the board to undertake this task.
The floor area staying the same?
Yes.
Yeah, it's like, they just need to have permission from us, because it's non-conforming to rebuild it.
Yes.
Basically, you want to rebuild exactly what's there.
Yep, yep.
Really some slight modifications on the interior, but on the outside, footprint, everything.
The window locations might be a little different, but, uh, the front door is a double door instead of a single door, but it's all the difference of roof line.
What's the
That's all really cosmetic.
Proposed new patio?
Pardon me?
You have on this survey a proposed new patio?
Yeah, I believe there's a patio outside. I think the patio would be permitted on the property.
Joe, did you have a question about this?
No, no, just the, the, uh, former determination, which I got, you know, that information, but it doesn't, doesn't really apply to this, you know, today.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the former ZBA was, had to do with the screen porch, but as part of the process, in order to avoid that being a use variance, the, the, uh, you, the ability to independently rent this as a separate residence was terminated.
Yeah, apparently in two thousand and sixteen, you know, things have, things, you know, were changed, and, um, uh, at one, at one, at one point in, in oh-five, uh, the entire property needed a use variance, not just the, not just, you know,
Correct.
not just a, um, a structure.
Right, yes.
Which, which I found, you know, a little difficult to understand. Thank God they were changed.
Yes, I agree. Took me a while to understand it, too.
Looking at it like it can't be real.
It was.
It was, yeah.
That's really all I have to say.
Yeah, no, you know, it looks good to me, thank you.
Yep.
Good.
I don't have any further questions for you, Jim, and any board member have anything? You folks, you, you got your attorney to speak for you, you don't want to say anything. All right, I don't have any further questions for you, Jim, so I think I'll make a motion to close this hearing for determination.
Second.
Seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Yeah.
All right, Jim, thanks. Have a great holiday.
You too.
Happy Christmas. All right, folks, good night, have a great holidays.
Happy holidays.
Good night.
You too.
All right.
What are we, top-level?
Go set.
It also means you have no opposition there.
Scott and Vanessa Goldstein, five-twenty Dune Road, applicant requests 197-291 to construct a second-story addition on a dwelling with pre-existing substandard side setbacks, rear setbacks, existing proposed, uh, representing representing a prohibited increase in the degree of non-conformity of a non-conforming building.
Nicholas Vera, Harker Street, one-twenty Mill Road, for the Goldstein. Good evening everybody, happy holidays. We come here before you to ask permission to construct a second-story addition on top of the existing roof decks on, that have this located at five-twenty Dune Road. We're asking for a side yard variance, side yard variance, we're also asking for a rear yard because of the wetlands, the EC, um, that impacts on the, on the property. So, a proposal, we're not going any closer to the wetland, which is the rear yard, and we're not going any closer to the side yard. Um, again, we're proposing to do this bedroom alteration, we're not increasing deck room, um, the bedroom that we're enlarging over this deck area. The proposed setbacks.
Nice, and you can see, we got a new survey with the lock coverage and all on it?
Yeah, we got a new survey for lock coverage.
I just got it, I haven't seen it yet.
I just got it and sent it in to you, so, um, we have an open building permit on the property that we hadn't closed.
I'm sorry, I see they just still have, uh,
We will close that. Um, and that building permit allowed us, I, we actually reduced some, we swapped some decking that's around the pool, uh, we configured it, we got rid of, uh, if you looked at the older, um, survey that was in there, with, it was a putting green that counted towards lock coverage at the time, that is gone, there are a few other things on the property that we did, so when we, when, uh, Mr. Hammond issued that building permit, we made sure that we swapped out, um, and I think actually we're less than what we used to be, although, um, I don't know if my older survey that we used when we submitted for the building permit shows that, so, but you can see that right now, uh, Mr. Corwin calculated that we're at twenty-five percent watch coverage, uh, there is no increase in that.
What's the lock coverage?
Um, twenty-five point four percent is what he comes up with. Look at Nate's new survey that I just submitted to you.
I guess I'm looking at a different one.
You're looking at
Nineteen point nine eight.
You're looking at
Did we get another one?
Yeah, we gave you, Brad, I'm, I, we submitted surveys the other day when I got this from Nate.
What? Old survey? They said there are some last week, we don't, you probably didn't have any of your files.
Yeah, so
Yeah, yeah, I know, I picked up tonight.
Well, I'm not sure if, if, you know, Nate is showing his survey that the, hold on one second, I'm going to get this, decks over eight inches above grade, um, he's showing that two thousand sixty-three square feet, um, and I'm not sure if we were, you know, the intention was, and it's, all the notes on the right-hand side, it's in a box right here. So, as I recall, that deck was supposed to be at grade, I think that deck is only that high above, so, I mean, I would have to check with Nate how we went from what was proposed when we did the application for the building permit, and
Yeah.
where we are right now. I mean, if that's an issue, we'll, you know, we'll straighten that out. But the application that you have before you is not looking for an increase in footprint, we're basically looking to build a second floor addition on top of that footprint, on top of those roof decks.
All right, so that possibly could be one more variant?
I mean, it possibly could, um, again, yeah, I'm, you know, I'm not sure how the building inspectors go and interpret that, because we were issued a permit for that, okay, and what it was supposed to have been a reduction of, so I'm not sure how, you know, Nate's coming up with that. What the rule is, anything eight inches or above?
The pre-existing CO for this house, are you all ready?
Right, right.
Like a subsequent, if it's all exposed, they require any variances, it was supposed to be reduction.
Right.
This survey just came in, so
Yeah, when I saw that, yeah, exactly, when I saw it, I, you know, I'm not going to hide from the fact that Nate is saying it's this, when we issued, we got that issue, that permit issued, it was suppo, it was supposed to be less than the existing twenty-five percent that was there, so
This application is constructing on top of decks, building any more decks. I don't think it's your intention to seek a lock coverage variance by increasing that.
Yeah, increasing the lock coverage.
Not increasing the lock coverage, right, we're just going up over that space, so, and okay, and again, you know, we're on top of those roof decks that exist with those two setbacks, okay? Unfortunately, as years have progressed, um, and if you look at the older survey or the older cycling, you'll see where the property line was, obviously, it's further north than where, you know, it is right now, but it's, again, defined by wetlands and defined by, by that wetland.
Go ahead and rip off the decks.
You do. But when I
We didn't get this, we couldn't even close out the permit yet.
Yeah.
We didn't close out, close out that permit yet, but, uh, yeah, if, if that's, if the case is upon inspection, if those decks are higher and they need to be included, then they have to be included, and they won't, they wouldn't be CO as well.
Be CO'd. Right, but that's not before us.
That's not before
Before us tonight is, it's just a little, a little section, really, it's a square foot, it's not going to enter the house.
It's adding like three hundred and eighty square feet to the house, more than that. So, basically, we're taking, we're expanding a bedroom.
Uh-huh.
We're providing the owners with, you know, the his and hers bathroom.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You're meaning, what you're looking at is a substantial, you know, uh, part of
Well, again, we're, you know, this is, they're looking to increase, you know, their square footage based on their needs for their house, um, there's no other place to put this without looking for more variances, area variances, um, you know, this is the best location for that, and as far as the alternative goes, um, I'm, you know, I'm not sure if we can call this a substantial improvement, because based on the percentage of the house, uh, the square footage of the house, we're probably only adding ten percent or so, okay? Although, we're over, a little over ten percent, because, uh, we have to sprinkle of the building now, because we are a three-story structure, and we're increasing that degree of non-conformity, so that is one of the things that we have agreed to do, if this board grants this variance and we get a permit, so, um, so we're, I think we are over ten percent, I think we're like twelve percent or something, I had to do those calculations for Brad.
Well, I'm going to talk about substantial, and that, and that, uh, that, but substantial in, uh, seventy-five feet and sixty, about sixteen feet from, you know, the rear yard.
Right, because that seventy-five feet is, you know, is defined by what is property that's underwater and everything, over the years, things have, you know, we accrue on, on the south side of Dune Road, on the ocean side, we get less because of all the storms over the years and, and wetlands creeping up, and obviously, people can't maintain their property, they just have to let it be, so that's, you know, pretty much what happened here, the house was built, you know, in that same location, wherever that property line was at one time, but again, that property is decreasing as the years go on, and we get, you know, more high tides and less high tide, so, um, the fact is, the house is there, so, you know, we're not, again, we're not getting any closer to those wetlands, because we're staying on top of footprint, so, yes, and I mean, it is, it is a substantial, if you look at it, you know, individually as, okay, if there's our property line, if we're building a new house, we're asking for the setback to be sixteen feet or eighteen feet, or whatever it is, you know, we're only asking to build on top of an existing footprint. So, that's, you know, that would be the argument, we're not increasing that degree of non-conformity, we're meeting that, you know, that existing situation that we have.
Okay. I don't have anything else for you, Nick. So, I think you're, uh, you're all, you're all okay with this, no further questions for Mr. Bureau, I'll make a motion to close the hearing for a decision.
Uh, well, I don't know if I close it right now without the, without the determination of, you know, of, of, uh, what the lock coverage is.
But again, we're not here to ask But again, we're not here to ask for lot coverage variance, I mean, that's something that we can, you know, have the building inspector determine, if I have to come back under, you know, under that being separate, um, you know, then, then we'll have to do that, I'm sure that there are some things that we can do
We need to have
Mitigate that if we have to, once Brad does his inspection for closing out. I would like to close this out.
I mean, you, usually you ask for the survey to have the coverage info on it for a reason, but up to you.
But we do have the coverage on the survey, and there's a CO for it, correct?
Yeah, under the old, yeah, the old CO shows that coverage, we, we played around with that, so to try to
This is why, you know, this, when I looked at this application, I didn't have a survey, it had the lot coverage on it.
Right, right.
You know, so that's what that was.
Well, so you, so
We had closed
Your old survey has, has this lot coverage on it?
The old survey shows the configuration of the house, and there were several surveys that were done over the years. You know, the last survey that I had gotten was done by a surveyor back west. He's just showing upland area, he is showing a lot area, he never showed square footage on it. We, we put an application in, we calculated the square footage on a site plan. We were showing, you know, trying to reduce that square footage now, you know, the nature of that, this latest survey, so I'm not sure how, how would you handle that?
Well, let me ask you this, I mean, you know, wasn't there a survey, wasn't there a survey given to the building department that was, that was under 20% for thread floor?
No.
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 Okay.
No, I think the idea, the whole premise was, the, the permit was issued, knowing that we were not increasing the existing square footers that and I think that's how that was. An old CO's lot coverage, like, at just a 26 or just
Yeah, about 26%.
Subsequent permit knocked it down to 25 and changed, and then this, this new survey that you're showing, whatever his number is, I believe it's lower than 25, 25%. But I, I can, I can check that.
Okay, I just sort of heard 19, you know, 19 points up somewhere.
And no, I, I, I might have said that I thought we were trying to reduce that
It was one of them that had 19.98.
That was the
That's inaccurate, we've had, no one submitted since then.
Yeah, I think what we did is we got rid of the putting green that was on the west side of the house, and I think then, since then, with Nate's new survey, I think we have less property, because the wetlands creeping, so, and I think it's always gonna be a problem, you know,
Okay.
As this goes along with, so if we came back in a year from now, we'd probably have less lot, you know, less lot and more lot coverage, you know, as the years go by, so.
Yeah, no, I, I just heard the 19 points up.
Yeah, I, I apologize.
So Joe, what, where you stand on it?
I'm, I'm
You're fine with it now? Had that clarified?
Uh, I'll look at that next week, if there is an issue, then you'll have to come up with a plan that
Yeah.
Shows no, you know, reductions.
I, I think, I think we're okay with that.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion, we go ahead and close this hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
All right?
Happy holidays.
Thanks, Nick.
It's a new question, I need it.
You're young for that.
I'm not that young. Jerry knows I beat myself up.
I never stopped Nick.
Can I stop you from seeing out?
Stop.
Where are you going, four days?
Did you? Dratton?
Sorry, I was up there, I, now you're talking. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy, happy Merry Christmas.
Can we close tomorrow?
So I like, uh, make a motion, we close tonight's meeting?
A second.
Seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Wow. All right.